Yes.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruita City Council meeting. The time is now 7:00 PM. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. W, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck?
Here.
Counselor Lenhart will be appearing virtually. Counselor Harvey?
Here.
Counselor Cry?
Here.
Counselor O'Brien?
Hello.
Counselor Breaman?
Here.
All right, we're going to observe a moment of silence and then do the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to stand with us. We'd like to just take a moment of silence to allow all face and beliefs an opportunity for prayer. Thank you. If you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
All right, we've got one presentation tonight. It's a Mesa County presentation and we've got our Public Works Director Kimberly Bowlen here to present on this. So you drew the short straw to present tonight?
Well, I'm not presenting, I'm just introducing.
All right.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Kimberly Bowlen, Public Works Director. We came before you last year to give a presentation on our total maximum daily load process that's going on. And we just wanted to get back in front of you guys to give you an update as to where we are with that process. And Carrie Gudorf is here from Mesa County. She's the Regulatory Programs Manager. And she's been spearheading this effort on behalf of all the stakeholders in the county.
Okay, Carrie Gudorf with Mesa County. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it.
All right, Carrie, we're going to, we got to make sure you're speaking into the mic because anybody remote, we've got to make sure they can hear you. So, thank you.
This is my second day, second time at the podium today. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of the TMDL, where we're at, where we're at with the efforts. And then where we're going to go from here. So if you could go to the next slide. So our first TMDL was issued, just as a reminder, in August of last year. And we submitted an appeal in September of last year. And it was placed on administrative hold and that's actually not correct. It wasn't December 2021, but it was placed on hold in October. So the division wanted to go back, look at things, see if they could reallocate with the selenium loading. And then get back and, and come up with some new analysis and new ways that they were going to do the analysis. And so what they did was they reviewed it in January of 2022. They came back to us. They have a technical memo that they submitted back to us. And if anyone would like to read that, I did bring a copy today. But I'll keep that. And, and I, Kim has a copy as well, so she can email copies to everyone. So they did a review on the data analysis. They did some geospatial data sets for online ditches. And what they did, and they determined land uses with that. And what they did, the CDPH, he thought it was a good method to just do a 200-foot buffer for any online canals for what they're thinking for the leaching from the groundwater. And, and so, as we all know, that there's a significant driver with, USGS demonstrated that there's a significant driver for online ditches. And then moving of selenium through our soils and through the shale layer here in the valley. And so they looked at the load and the waste load allocations. And they found at the end results, it decreased the MS4 reductions. However, that was only during the irrigation season. So our loads for the irrigation season went down, but our loads for the non-irrigation season skyrocketed. So, like I said, they did the buffer zones for the online ditches. And so we listened to that memo in January and we, they wanted to meet with us again before they did another draft of, or the issue of the draft of the TMDL. And we just didn't think it was going to be worth our while. And so if you want to go to the next slide. What we did, they issued draft number two of the TMDL in February and our comments are due in two days. So I better get back to the office and hurry up. So we have three really important players on our team. We have NSW who is our legal counsel. They're going to submit the petitions, the comments. They're kind of gathering everyone together as our legal team. And SGM is an engineering group and they have a lot of background on groundwater. And Angie Fowler is heading that up and so she's assisting us with that. And then we have a new person on our team and his name is Winfield. He goes by Win. And he's owned Southwest Hydro, Hydrologic, and he's working on the TMDL comments as well for groundwater. And the seepage, he's super smart. He's with USGS and he's taken a really good look at the TMDL and what the CDPH is proposing and why it's not going to work for our valley. So, overall comments and draft number one of the TMDL were addressed. Selenium loadings estimate, were estimates. There was not really scientific background. The percent reductions are not going to work for the MS4 during non-irrigation seasons and they're not really obtainable for our community. And not all the ditches were included in their analysis. So we have some major issues with their new way that they were thinking that they were going to help us, but they're really not going to help us. Okay, next slide. So where we're at with the TMDL cost, just wanted to give that to you in an overview. NSW, who is our legal counsel, is $50,000. Mesa County supported the first $25,000. And then we, the MS4 has a separation based on population. Based on, we have it based on a couple of different things for how we have it broken up. Based on our MS4 boundary and how much of your Fruita city limits are within our MS4 boundary. So it's divvied up by Grand Junction 65%, Fruita's 24%. And then we have two non-standards that recently joined our MS4, which is Grand Valley Water Users and the School District 51. So they're also players in the NSW portion.
Is Palisade not in that then?
So Palisade right now does not have a TMDL. There are two that are well outside their city limits and it's Rapid Creek and Cottonwood Creek, I think. And neither of those are going to hit their city limits. So I didn't think it was fair to require them to participate. So SGM, their budget is 38,000. Again, we broke that up. Mesa County did almost 65%, 64% cost share for Grand Junction. And then we broke that up as well. And then if you want to go to the next slide. And then Winfield's budget is 15,000. And we actually have the Chamber, AMGD, and WCCA that want to contribute also to that. And so they're also going to help us with Winfield's cost. Next slide. So overall, fruit is cost. This is just your breakdown of where you guys are at. It looks like it's all covered. And then you guys paid part of the invoices in 2021 when we were just getting started with everything. And then the, the MOU that Mesa County has with Fruita for, for running your MS4 program. TMDLs weren't part of that MOU. And so we're probably going to have to it, that's probably going to stay the way that it is because we didn't know TMDLs were going to be coming up when we took over this program. So surprise. Let's see. So we have comments through the division on the 17th of March. And the Water Quality Control Division is going to publish then a final draft. And they're going to address any of the comments that we submit to them. So we have a whole pile of comments that we're submitting to them. I believe we're going to actually submit it tomorrow to make sure that they have it in their hands. And then they're going to publish a final draft and address any of the comments. And if comments are not addressed, the appeal will need to be made within 30 days of the final that's published. And then if no, if they don't receive a appeal within the 30 days, then the Water Quality Control Division will issue a final TMDL. And then it will go to the EPA for approval. So that's kind of where we're at. And then 30,000-foot view of the TMDL. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's a lot of information for a short amount of time. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there any expectation that they will change their opinion?
I hope so. I mean, I can only hope so at this point because they're not basing it on science. And if they really, they're going to come out to the valley in April and we're going to drive them around and we're going to show them that all the outfalls for the MS4 are dry. I've run up and down Leech Creek and a bunch of the other drainages in the last couple of days, taking pictures and everything's dry. And so I can only hope, but then they're going to come during irrigation season, which is not going to help my cause. So I can only, if they don't, we're going, we're going to need to appeal the TMDL until they can stop, put pause on it and make sure that they get this right. I think that's going to be the best, that's going to be the best for our valley. I mean, overall, if we get this, it's going to be harder to get things removed and with the sampling and everything that they're going to require to remove segments from the TMDL than it is for us at this point in the game to say, let's push pause.
So is there any argument for breaking up where the water comes from? Irrigation season, we're bringing water in out of the river. We're doing that. But because we're surrounded by so much federal land, I mean, that is just, it originates on federal land and then we get stuck with it. How, how can we differentiate between those two? Or can we?
So they gave us a pie and I should have put it on there, but they do a waste load allocation. They do a background and they do a margin of safety and then they divide it up between point source and non-point source. And the non-point source is going to be your agriculture. And then your point source is going to be airport, industrial permits, MS4. There's a couple of different, Mac Airport has a permit. I think FedEx has a permit. And so it's all broken up into those different pieces of pies. And, and I agree that a lot of that is coming from the background. But I'm not sure they're, they're, they stopped it right at the government High Line Canal and they've run it south. They haven't looked at anything north of the government High Line Canal.
Any other questions? Thank you, Carrie.
I hope to have better names the next time I come.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public participation. So this is time set aside for the council to listen to comments from the public that do not appear on our agendas. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda, now is the time. All right, hearing none, I will close public comment and we'll move into our consent agenda. So these are all items where they've been agreed to or met prior to coming before council. They will, they will all be approved with one motion. So with that, we're going to open the consent agenda up to public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll close that and bring it back to council. Are there any questions, comments, or do we have a motion to approve?
I move we approve the consent, consent agenda.
Second. Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, we've got two public hearings tonight, both legislative hearings. So our first one is Resolution 2022-10, a request to approve an amendment to the 2022 annual budget. We've got our Assistant to City Manager Shannon Basson here to present.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for the opportunity to present this agenda item. This is a supplemental budget appropriation to change three things in the 2022 budget. Two of them are rollover projects, which were budgeted in 2022 but not completed. And then we will complete those in 2020, or sorry, budgeted in 2021 but not completed, we'll complete those in 2022. And those are for the housing needs assessment that EPS is working on and also the Fremont Street design. And the third budget amendment is additional $54,000 for chip seal fees to be used for the 2022 chip seal and patching project. With those additional $54,000, we're going to cover three more streets, which are Applewood Drive from Mesa Street to Maple Street, Sunset Court, and Aquarius Avenue from the subdivision change to Fremont Street. The funding for those, for the additional revenues for the chip seal project is from deferred revenues, chip seal fees. So we have to use them on chip seal projects. And this seems like an appropriate time to do so, so we can better, we can amp up our 2022 project and I have more funding to hit some additional areas of the city. So yeah, with that, I'm always happy to answer any questions for the council after public participation. Yeah, recommend approval on this supplemental budget amendment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, with that, we're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions on this? All right, and do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution 2022-10, amending the 2022 budget to appropriate funds in the general ledger fund and capital projects fund for the completion of special and capital projects originally included in the 2021 annual budget and improve a supplemental appropriation of funds for the 2022 chip seal project.
Second. Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
And has a six zero.
All right, we're going to move into our second hearing. It's ordinance 2022-11, a second reading. Ending chapter 2.20 of the city, Fruita City Municipal Code. And we've got our City of Fruita Finance Director, Margaret Sell, here to present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is a second reading on the public hearing and it formally creates the Engineering Department. Previously, the engineering staff was underneath and reported to the Public Works Director, beginning with 2022 budget. Those have been separated out as two separate departments. The ordinance essentially creates the engineering, engineering department and then makes some minor amendments to the Public Works Department, removes those engineering duties from the description of the Public Works Department in the code. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that and staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. We're going to open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions?
Just one quick one. So just, you know, organizationally, every department has a department head. Is this going to change? You know, what our engineer is going to be called? Is he not going to be department head?
Yeah, he's still, the title remains the same, is City Engineer, but as the head of that department, I'm getting feedback.
Usually, I mean, it just puts you in a different pay scale is kind of what I was asking for. Budget.
We were already, it actually doesn't change anyway we were functioning. So no.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2022-11, amending chapter 2.20 of the Fruita Municipal Code and creating the Engineering Department for the City of Fruita.
Second. Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. All right, with that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. So this is going to be a little different tonight than what we normally have. We're going to go into an executive session. And so we're going to keep the meeting open here for the public. Council is going to go down to Mike Bennett's office. And then we're going to have a meeting with our city attorney. And so we, we're going to call an executive session. And we'll have to have a motion for this, for receiving legal advice from our attorney pursuant to 24-64024B CRS regarding responding to Chaffa's questionnaire for Fruita Muse and Fruita residences at Fruita Development. And so then, once we're done with that, we will come back up here for our, continuing our regular council meeting. So you're welcome to stay up here. We're not sure how long we'll be down there, but the meeting will still be, we'll be coming back to that in just a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, I move to meet in executive session to consider a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city's attorney pursuant to state statute 24-6-4024B. Call our vice statutes regarding responding to Chaffa questionnaires for the Fruita Muse and residences at Fruita Development.
Second. Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Breaman?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
PM and we're now returning to our regular open meeting. So our next item on our administrative agenda is the Colorado Housing Finance Authority. We've got a jurisdiction letter and questionnaire. And so we've got our planning and development director, Dan Karas here to present on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Just give me one second while I put this on the little screen.
Dan, did you trying to just double check? Did we have caught like hard copies of these two in case people want to write notes as we discuss or? Or I can, I can print those off if needed.
I don't, I don't.
We didn't, right? I was asking, we didn't have heat up here, right?
You can turn up the heat while you're getting them off the printer. Pretty please. Maybe.
I've got this one. Okay, I'll take. I want this one.
Get out of here. Climb in.
Left side.
I was gonna wonder why I smell.
There's not that much cat.
I was just.
Oh, we're, we're ready.
Ready to get comfortable.
You just have to say, hey, let's get this thing moving. All right, Dan, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, Dan Karas, planning director for the city of Fruta. For you this evening is two questionnaires conventionally done by the, by the Colorado Housing Finance Authority that have three questions for two tax credit applications that are in the 2022's round one or otherwise known as the nine percent housing credit program. Within these questionnaires, it, it states a couple of things. Obviously, it's an introduction. Wait, you know, just for the record, just pointing out that that is not how you spell the mayor's last name. But on one, but on the, on the second one, fortunately, that was correct. And I just, I just want to point out that this is a fairly routine process that the CHAF does for any tax credit application that's going into a community. Essentially, you know, the way that I read this, when I review it and how I've, how it's been communicated to me with, with other colleagues across the state is that this is like the formal opportunity for the city to, to comment on an application that is pursuing this, this financing strategy. It mentions in here that, you know, these, these developments, if awarded, would, would typically have a deed restriction of up to 30 to 40 years. So I, I see this as the Colorado Housing Finance Authority realizing that it's a long-term commitment for a community to have a tax credit application be awarded and an affordable housing development placed in your community. And so the, the reason for this is to check in and make sure that what's being proposed aligns with the community's strategy to combat affordable or attainable housing in, in your community. So I, I figured that we would just kind of go, what, go through one of them and at a time. And I, I wanted to ask Mary Elizabeth and Mike if we, you know, do we want to kind of do all of the presentations or ask the council, do we do all the presentations or just take them one at a time and go from there? Is there a preference or, you know?
Up to you guys if you want to just, if you want it timed.
Or do you want to do comparisons so we know which is?
Well, can, can we go back to my question that I started downstairs? I would really like to get that a little bit more. So when we started off coming up with ideas to we, Dan, Dan and Mike, how to help this housing crisis, one really great idea surfaced to the top, followed by another really great idea. At the same time, unbeknownst to us, there were two light tech projects going on within the city. One, we didn't know anything about and one that everybody knew about. We didn't solicit the light tech. We didn't ask for it. We know nothing about it. And that's a, those are projects that you touched on. I mean, these are potentially millions of dollars worth of commitment, decades worth of commitment partnerships somehow working together. We're not in any position, in my opinion, to tackle anything like that. Secondly, these really great options that we're coming up with. I mean, we're creating, potentially creating an opportunity for people to buy homes in our city. That's huge to buy your own little slice of Fruta, right? That is a really great strategy that anybody can get behind. Secondly, the additional dwelling units for rental. That's brilliant to have the homeowner, people that actually live here to make a little bit of extra income to support a local employee, somebody that maybe needs a smaller place to live. That money stays here in our community. Those are great strategies. The frustrating part is that these light tech projects are stealing. And I said this downstairs, they're stealing the headlines of really great things that we're doing. Why are we supporting any of them, I guess? And I would love to hear from the rest of you guys as to why we're, why we think this is such a good fit for us. Anybody?
Thanks, Lori. Anybody, anybody want to answer that first?
Well, I, I think a couple of things happened and, and I will admit, I think I got wrapped up in the occasion when they first vetted their projects to us that you just outlined. I think.
I heard you actually use the, use the project's names.
Okay.
So that it's clear what we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay. So no pronouns. That's what you're asking.
Pronouns.
The, the down payment assistance kind of program for getting your own home and the people who can, who own an adjacent property on their property to be able to rent out and have some support in, in doing that. Those projects, I think, too, were very appealing to, to me and very innovative. And I was, and I'm, I'm very excited to see where all of that's going to go in the future. And then, and then these light tech projects came in at the same time. And I, I, I will say, I think I rushed to a judgment with it, partly because one of the project was on a really strict timeline. And so it felt like, oh, my goodness, if we don't do this right now, then we might miss this opportunity. And I think I got, I think I just fell into rushing, rushing into it all. And so we talked at the workshop a lot about going slow to go fast and going slow to do it right. And I, and I think that's where I'm, I'm landing now because our real, our real prize are the designs that you have around the down payment and the, and the adjacent property stuff. And it's easy to get distracted. So I guess it's a learning, it's been a learning curve for me. I don't, I don't want to say, oh, I don't think we should ever do light tech. I, I, I hope that as, thank you, as our housing authority gets established and, and, and we have a board and we have procedures and processes and they're up and running. I hope that we can look at it some more. I mean, I, I think being able to reach various price points is, is really important. And I think being able to make sure that we have a full range of people living in our community is really important. But I hear what you say, and the more I think about it, I, I think we, we are, I like these drafts because it's not saying yes or no. It's just saying, we're just, we have this baby housing authority that we're barely trying to figure out how to diaper even, you know? And, and, and it's going to take some time before we, we know enough to be able to do more. So, you know, does that explain where I was coming from?
And I think that these housing strategies that we've been talking about, we've sort of shied away from going towards a strategy where you sort of like put all the low income housing in one area. We like the idea that people across the socioeconomic spectrum can be in Fruta anywhere, that they can buy a home, rent a home, and they're not stuck over there in, in one place. And I like, and I think that's the way our, all of our strategies are going. So I mean, I, I think we, we, we approved that one because we, we've been tackling this. I mean, I, I think we, we, we approved that one because we, we've been tackling this problem and trying to figure out a way to get it done. And it may have been a little bit of a knee jerk reaction because it doesn't really fit the strategies we've been talking about.
Well, can I just interject for a second? One, I think this is great because the first question, of course, on these questionnaires is, you know, how, does this fit or meet your housing plan? So keep with this discussion because that's exactly the feedback that we need for that first question. The other thing I just want to remind you is with the Fruta Muse, all that's been approved is a rezone. There is no approval of a project. They still don't know if they have the Lytec funding. You know, they will still potentially be coming back to the city for other assistance or partnerships. And so that piece has not happened yet. So, you know, the, the city has not committed or like approved or partnered with the Muse project or their Fruta residences at Fruta, for that matter. So just wanted to remind you guys that you're, you're not as far along, the baby's still getting diapered maybe, but as far as the projects go, you guys haven't, you know, signed up and signed off on them.
Just to add to that a little bit, you know, when I, when I read this first question, it says, do you view the proposed project as being consistent with the development and preservation of the housing plan in your community? I don't see anywhere that says that that needs to be codified in the land use code, that that needs to be, you know, sort of this, this plan that you've been working for decades. I mean, I, I read that with like, whether you're, whether you're 25 years into your housing plan, or whether you're, you know, two months into developing your housing plan, if it fits, it does. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And I think that, you know, it's incumbent upon us and, you know, we, we based a lot of, a lot of the content and verbiage that we put into each one of these questions, you know, based off of the things that we've heard from council and workshops and what we've, what we've discussed. And, and I, I do, I do agree with the concept that, you know, we did start out with the premise that it didn't seem wise to just jump into kind of the traditional way of developing attainable or affordable housing that everyone else is doing, that, you know, each community has its own housing related issues that need to be solved in a unique way. And we're, I think, well on our way of doing that. I mean, we presently have a draft from, from EPS to share with council and, and the technical advisory group on the 28th of this month. And then the 29th of this month was that workshop that was moved from the 22nd, I believe, to the 29th to get that in front of the council and the public, not for codification or adoption, but just as part of the, the public process that is developing a housing plan. So, you know, I, from what I'm hearing, I, you know, I'd like to get the councils, you know, kind of consensus on this because it applies to both from my perspective, is that, you know, we, you know, we, we feel a bit caught off guard, you know, we're right in the middle of developing our strategies and we're right in the middle of developing our housing plan. And it seems like an awkward position to put a community in to endorse a particular development over another or both or none, you know, when we haven't had an opportunity to do the appropriate amount of outreach with our community to decide what fits, you know, within the context of our long range plans, which is the comp plan and then some of the changes that we've made in the land use code. I do want to call your attention to the fact that, you know, in, in, in number two, for, for both, for both applications, we do make mention of the fact that, you know, there, there are a lot of activities that are taking place today, you know, with regards to bringing additional units onto the market that are for rent. You know, we have roughly about 40 apartment units in two different developments that one is, I believe, 18 and one is 19, that are likely going to garner rents that are akin to the strategies that we've been pursuing with kind of the 80 to 120% of AMI. That's not an assertion that, that it will be that, but you know, there is housing variety that is being proposed in an area that seemed to make sense to our community when we adopted the comprehensive plan and then when we codified the land use code. You know, we, at the, at the very least, sent a signal that additional density was supported in an area that would spearhead more commercial speculation and create more jobs and create more walkability to and from work in a location that seems to be unilaterally supported by, by the community at large and, and this council. So I just want to, you know, we, we, we've said this a number of times, but, you know, we're, we have a housing authority that doesn't have a bylaws, it doesn't have a, a board members yet. But like, we spent the last 36 months like updating just about every single long range plan that, that the city has to offer. And a lot of that is land use related. And, you know, we've addressed the things that applied to zoning from my perspective. And we've also addressed some of the purpose statements about developing partnerships that are present in the valley today. And you see that in the Muse response because talks about formulating partnerships with the original group that we met with, which was the Grand Junction Housing Authority and then certainly Housing Resources of Western Colorado, which I want to make mention, is, is affiliated in some facet with the residents at Fruta. So, you know, there is some intent driven guiding principles that are, that are in our comp plan that do talk about formulating partnerships with agencies in the valley, you know? And I want to kind of bring us back to the stratosphere of like, these are both affordable housing developers, like for profit affordable housing developers. You know, we never really made mention of that, you know, in, in the, in the effort of the comp plan. We, we talked about strengthening those relationships with Habitat and Housing Resources and the Grand Junction Housing Authority. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't know if anybody else wants to mention anything, but, you know, we could certainly have a, a conversation about like kind of the guts of what we wrote in here, but that we need to know if things need to be taken out, things need to be added, or if language needs to be strengthened in certain sections. And just so we, you know, kind of bet best meet the, the vision and the direction of the council before we formulate.
All right, thanks, Dan. I want to get back to number one, like Mary Elizabeth was talking about, because I'm going to give my two cents on this. I think with our housing strategy plan that we've been looking at, we keep talking about, oh, we don't have, we have the housing authority on paper, but we don't have a board. That board's going to set up or that, the bylaws are going to set up what we are going to support. So if we're going to support these two programs, then question one is going to be, no, they don't really fit. It isn't consistent with what our plan is. I mean, if that's what we're all saying as a council, is our plan, our housing plan was to do the ADUs and to do the down payment assistance, then, you know, is it consistent, you know, with our housing plan? It's not consistent with what we started. I guess that's my, my thing that I want to put in there. I think there's a lot of assumptions being made on these Lytec, these two Lytec projects that they're going to come back for tax incentives and tax breaks and other things where, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have to allow that through our housing authority. Is that correct, Mary Elizabeth?
That is correct. I mean, we're anticipating because those are usual asks from these type of developments, but that the housing authority doesn't have to become a special limited partner or does not have to go to the city and, you know, advocate for those tax abatements. It doesn't have to, you know, and it would come to the city council about the waiver of like impact fees. But those are certainly things that these type of projects ask for. And nothing, you know, says that you have to say yes. You know, that's, I mean, that's, you know, the city's prerogative one way or the other.
Okay. So I guess that's my, the assumptions being made here, you know, are, I guess, hard for me to say, okay, yep, we're, you know, we're with the development and preservation of housing plan or what the housing plan is when there's so many assumptions with this right now with the Lytec, because it's not even a direction we were initially looking at. I like Lori's point that it's all of a sudden just taking over the whole conversation and we're kind of, it's distracting us from what our primary plan was. And I, so I think that's one of my questions on that. Number one is, do either one of these really hit, you know, what our housing plan is? So that's, that's what I'm going through right now. Kyle or Matthew, you guys?
And you're just kind of going back to the fact that we don't have it established. We haven't set the strategy for the housing authority. So therefore we don't have a comprehensive plan in place yet. And therefore it's almost, it doesn't fit within.
At this point in time.
But yes. Well, until we have that strategy, I don't know if codified is the right word, but until we set up the housing authority and its guidelines and its bylaws, I think is really what sets that up. And until that happens, it, it doesn't fit within.
Well, does it not fit within? I mean, you're assuming, you never want to do a Lytec, just as much as anyone's assuming that we are.
Yeah, Karen, yeah, you had something.
No, I was going to say, I mean, the first line, you know, the city, we have not adapted or excuse me, adopted a formal housing plan. I mean, we were, I'm listening to all these assumptions from, from both sides, you know, that we're anticipating millions of dollars over, you know, decades for certain things. I mean, there's so much that we don't know. And if we just stick to what we do know, that we don't have a formal housing plan yet, we don't have a housing authority yet. Or, I mean, it should be a simple answer, correct?
I think I sort of agree with what Dan said earlier that we have sort of been pointing in a direction and we've been sort of laying down the pieces to build this plan that we will codify at some point. So we do have the intent of what we're after and how we plan to go get it. I, I'm wondering if, since we haven't seen like final reports or anything, I mean, there's nothing in any drafts you've seen that sort of point away from the direction we're heading, right?
This time.
Okay. So if you.
Sorry. No, I was just going to say, I, it would be, I would feel better with a decision that said, yes, this is what these other two ideas, but that they're formalized and we voted on. I mean, for me, yeah, it's just easy to, just to go back and forth and what we think might happen. And, and obviously all of these things are, are exciting and I'm looking forward to them. But the discussion is just pretty frustrating, I think, right now for me.
If we look at the language that's in the letters, but neither of the letter says, yep, this completely totally meets everything we hope for in our planning. It says, we, we haven't adopted a formal housing plan yet. Here's what we know we kind of want to do. And then the second question as well, it doesn't say, yes, totally is, you know, consistent in the one, it brings up some, in the Fruta Muse, it brings up some questions about location and location or in the vicinity of, of services. I mean, I, I thought, I read through the letters pretty carefully and they seem to be very objective and neither supporting nor denying, like this is where we are in, in creating things. I don't know, was I, did you, did you see something different in the letters? Do you feel like the letters are super supportive? Yeah, this is exactly what we've been looking for? Because I didn't see that.
We did try to create these drafts in a way that was fairly just neutral and factual. I mean, that, that not taking a strong, not, not advocating that, yes, we love this thing, but also not saying, you know, no, we absolutely hate it, but like here, here's where we are. And I, I think the way they're written, they don't say that either one of them, you know, fits 100%.
That's the way I read them.
And that, that was, that's how I were attend, but, you know, obviously it's, you know, the mayor is going to be the one signing this. So it's, it is, it is a response from council. So you guys need to be, you know, comfortable with what it says.
I think a question then becomes, you know, I, you kind of cloaked it as this is our opportunity to really kind of set the tone for what they're hearing from the city. And I think if, if the general consensus is like, these really aren't really a fit with what we've been working towards, then we should just be pretty blunt about that. And maybe that's stronger language than what's in here already. I, I don't know. And I'm not sure what if, you know, what the etiquette is on that. I mean, obviously this is very, it's written very objectively, which I think is, it's, it's maybe exactly what they want to hear. Would there be any harm in wording something that's stronger that says, this really isn't what council and city of Fruta have been looking to do?
Yeah, no, the, to answer that question, I think all three of us were shaking our head, no, I mean, there would not be anything wrong. I think we put these drafts out so you can strengthen it, get more specific. You could.
I think in the work.
Either direction.
At least I was under the impression that these needed to be just strictly objective. And I, well, I think there's a lot of value to that. I think having, you know, our subjectivity, we're the ones that have been sitting through, you know, hundreds of hours of meetings over the last couple of years about this. That's, that's kind of important too.
So you're suggesting that we add language that says, even though it's not finished, we're currently working on two other ideas. I'm trying not to sneeze. But we're working on two other concepts that are not.
That are a better fit.
That are a better fit for our community.
If.
I think that.
Maybe that would be totally fine.
I think that's totally appropriate. And if you look at how the questions are worded, they really are looking for the city's opinion. It is not just being objective. We were, again, we were giving you guys kind of this starting point to, you know, either, you know, straight, either make it.
Yeah, maybe I mistook your guys' objectivity as what you were suggesting ours should be, but that's the impression that I had, but.
Oh, I, I like your direction that you're heading with. So it's not, you know, we're not there and we're working on other strategies that these fall outside of.
Yeah. But I mean, in just, I know I'm 20 minutes late now to answer your question. But that's kind of how this goes. So apologies to you guys too. You know, I've been on council for almost eight years and I felt completely unprepared for that type of public hearing and the atmosphere. And I, I mean, I've, I've said to multiple people, I wish Lori was here.
I just, I'm sorry. I'm.
The, the thing is, is like, you know, I'm thinking in my head, oh, we're just looking at the zoning and I'm playing that over and over. And, you know, what's, it's just difficult. And you're, you're given this packet of materials that has like, you know, glowing support from every major employer in, in the grand valley, essentially, well, certainly in Fruta. And you have, you know, recommended approval minus one, one person from the planning commission, which is noted. I mean, it like, all that sort of stuff is taken into account and you have rec, recommend, you know, recommended approval from the city staff because they're in a similar position. I think they were, you know, for as much due diligence and work as they've put in, unprepared to deal with that. We're talking about something completely different. And I think in that moment, it just becomes, you know, and, and I think I said in the workshop, so I don't want to be, beat a dead horse about it, but it felt, I felt a little bit manipulated and sort of taken advantage of. And you know, I would, I certainly wouldn't feel bad about putting that in there, but I don't know how, you know, what everybody else is.
And we're talking about the Fruta Muse to be specific, right?
Right. And the, and there should be a distinction that we didn't even know about the other, the other one. I, I'd never heard anything about it until I think I saw it in the weekly update, maybe that following Friday after we had that hearing. And I did look back and I think prior to that, it was called something else. There was a different title for it. Yeah. And so, you know, that, but in the public court of public opinion, it's, you know, we know all of this stuff and we were, we're weighing one against the other and there's, and that's just not what it is. It's like you're presented and, and they, they also both, even if we said these aren't in the plan and this isn't what we're into, they could still come through the process and we'd still be put in that position either way, you know? And so that, I know that's not a super clear answer as to why, but it's, but it's, you know.
I'd like to hear you say you felt like you were manipulated. I think that, I think that does, that is relevant to this whole conversation.
And I will say, I'm, I'm also not against the possibility and conversations taking place about Lytec projects. I'm not going to be around to be the one having the conversation. I may show up and like waste my opinion, but I don't know if I'm in support of that or against that. I have no idea. We didn't, we never talked about it at, at length. So So the little bit that I know about them is, you know, research I've done Googling and the little bit that, you know, Dan's told us about it, that's kind of come up in briefly as they move on to the next thing, you know, so. And the one last thing I'll say about it is, I think that in the future, for the future council that's coming on, whoever gets elected, something that could be really, really valuable is, and I think it'd be valuable for people that have been sitting on council too, is to have a little more training as to how to work in a quasi judicial capacity. Because none of us are trained in that. I'm not a, I've never even done, you know, jury duty, you know, I've never, you know, so, you know, my sort of experience is limited to this. And it's usually, you know, one night and you make a decision, you move on. It's not tabling it. I don't know. I just think it could be helpful to have, a little bit more education about how that should look. I mean, one thing I thought about, I should have asked in the hearing is, when were these letters of support? Like from the district written at what, because the project changed over the course of the year. And were those, you know, the district might be very supportive of, you know, some sort of Lytec or public housing project that's going to house teachers. But was that letter of support specific to this project that was coming before the council? And I know that you're not supposed to vote on that stuff when you're doing zoning, but it's all, it's all in the packet. I mean, it's all there and we're, we are making decisions that are based on long-term things outside of that. And I,
Well, I think that's exactly sort of the, why I keep going back to all that's happened is the zoning on the muse project, you know, this, so this is step two, is this Chaffa funding, whether, and how you want to respond to this questionnaire. And I think what I'm kind of hearing is beef up and be more specific on both of them. And the first response that we are, you know, still working on our housing strategies, we are going in a different direction as far as importance to our community and what fits in our community. And, you know, kind of leave it at that.
Might I suggest?
The one thing, sorry, the one thing I was just going to add that is in the draft that you guys haven't really talked about that, but I think was good that Dan had pointed out is the housing strategies that we've been focused on with the down payment assistance and the ADUs. It's really looking at more of the 80 to 120% AMI. The Fruta residences is really focusing on the 30 to 60%. And Fruit of Muse is going to have a variety of range from 30 to 120. So to the extent that the comp plan, you know, does recognize sort of a broader mission statement of attainable housing for all, you know, that is one kind of plus, if you want to call that, and towards both of these fitting into sort of the bigger housing plan is at some point we need, you know, the city's starting here and that's where we're focusing and that's what we're doing. But these would fit a niche somewhere in there.
I, I like that last sentence better than the first sentence. The first sentence was something like, oh, no, it's gone.
I, I, I felt it though. It, it almost sounded like Fruta doesn't want this.
Yeah.
And I, I want to make, I, I want to make sure that it doesn't sound like that because I, I don't not want that. I, I don't, so I don't want to say Fruta doesn't want Lytec housing or this, we don't want low income housing. It's just, it really doesn't fit in with the strategies we've been talking about.
That we have right now, because right now we're focusing on these two other strategies while we're growing this. So at this point in time, we don't, we haven't decided what we're going to do about Lytec projects. And I think that's honest.
All right, then let's go around. Matthew, what do you think about that? I mean, or what direction? So they have clear direction because she's got to write the letter.
Right, that, getting back to, you know, we're focusing on, we're still developing the plan. And right now we have, we're looking at two different strategies, which are not in alignment with this. But I think it should be noted that that is at this point in time, but the overall strategy of, I mean, our end goal, we're just not there yet, is to have people have the ability to live in Fruta, own a chunk of the, their piece of the pie, or however it was said. And it's not just one area of this, you're one socioeconomic that we want it, it's mixed throughout. And I think that needs to come clear. As the second part of that statement of, we're only focusing on these two types right now. Is that clear as mud?
Yeah, yeah, maybe the, the 80% to whatever is kind of where we're,
20.
Is, is where we're focusing right now. Obviously our long-term plans are to include a larger scope of people, but right now we haven't addressed the 30 to 60.
That we're addressing the 60 to, or 80 to 120.
Yeah, they're numbers, you know.
Over to Lori.
I mean, I, so I'm, I'm trying to bust this up into two different conversations. The conver- the first conversation is, am I opposed to this type of housing? No, I'm not opposed to it just right now. But what I'm looking at though, you have very specific questions for very specific applications. So I mean, do you view this proposed project as being consistent with the development and preservation of the housing plan in your community? No, period. And then the second question, if proposed project is not viewed as consistent, then why? And then we explain it, I guess I, that because we're dealing with just these very two specific projects and very two specific questions for each project, seems to me very easy to just go, no, period, end of sentence. But again, I'm not opposed to these projects, just not at this time. So that's my thought. Is that clear as mud also?
Well, we gotta get in consensus. So that's where we're, we're at now, Kyle. Cause you, I think you, Lori and I are probably about to say. Three, I'll go then, um, cause I, I, I'd rather keep it short and sweet and say, yes, our current housing plan does not include this. And then why is the second question? I, I mean, I, I, I think that's more direct and to the point is I think what Kyle initially started to say was, hey, why can't we just say it doesn't fit with our plans now, you know? And then you go to the one.
We don't have a plan.
Right.
We don't have a finalized plan.
Microphone, so.
Um, as Dan was saying earlier, it's, it's not like housing plan in capital letters or, you know, formally adopted. I mean, you guys do have a, you know, I'd say beyond the diapering stage of a plan. And so that's, you know, that's what we're talking about. It doesn't have to be formally codified. It's what, you know, what's your, what is the city doing now, you know, to address the housing issue?
Just to clarify, I never said the housing plan was a baby. I said the housing authority was a baby.
She seems to have taken more objection.
I would disagree. I mean, right now it's, it's an idea. I, I don't think we have a plan until it's codified. We have a new council coming on and that could substantially potentially change it. A new council could come on and say, yeah, the housing authority is there, but we are not going to have anybody on it. So therefore makes it inactive. I mean, I, I think we have a great idea that we're working towards finalizing a plan. I, I respectfully disagree. Now, it's into.
So that's not a baby?
It's, to me it is, it's still in its infancy, infancy and is still an idea until it gets codified. It is not a plan. It is just an idea.
Can you prove it?
I, I think that we could sort of on a line up front, just stay that we are in the middle of this. We can sort of answer that. We can, we don't have to say, oh, it's attached. We just haven't put a stamp on it or whatever, but we can say we're in the middle of, of developing this.
We're in the throes of pregnancy.
But like to,
Got to.
And say that, you know, based on the ideas that we, or that, you know, the process we're following, the, the direction we're headed, it doesn't meet that. And, and then go into a lot of the details below.
So Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could try and take what you're saying and then clarify a couple pieces, maybe it'll help, maybe it won't, but let's try it. I think, I think we need to, I, and we haven't heard from everybody. So if there's still a chance to say no and, uh, but I think I'm hearing a fairly good consensus on question one is, is no. Question two, we explained that. I do think to explain where we're at with the plan, I think we need to detail where we are truly at. We have a comp plan that says, deal with variety of housing and deal and create policies around or seek to work with agencies like Housing Resources and Grand Junction Housing Authorities or others. It says to, so change the code to develop more of a variety of housing and densities and, and that, that is codified. So then we approve that code and we did that. So we have pieces of the plan that are complete and we have pieces of the plan that are not complete. And I think we need to detail, you know, essentially we're saying we have, we've done this, this and this. And then we are working on these strategies. But when it comes to these projects and what they're asking for, we just can't say whether we're going to be a special limited partner. We haven't developed that. We, like, that would be a, that's a guessing game and that's not what they're asking us to do. They're asking us where our plan is currently. And like Dan said, housing plan's going to evolve over many years. It's never going to be codified at one moment and be done. It's going to, it's going to continue to change. So we have done specific things that are codified. We're working on strategies that are different than these. And we have not set strategies or policies related specifically to these. And so that's kind of what I'm hearing. It's, it's exactly where we're at. And I think we can be very specific about that and answer it that way. I, I don't know if you want to add or if there's questions or, or disagreement, but we can, we can go from there.
Does that sound?
Must have been 20 minutes.
Well, and Karen is up there being quiet too, so.
Oh, I, yeah, I can say something. No, I like what Mike said. I, I would agree with Matthew as far as, yeah, I mean, we can just say we're not there yet. And what Mike said, I would, I would agree with that. I could, I could go with that. And, yeah, and, and as Ken said, this, I support of diversity and, and housing for all different income levels. And obviously the, our priorities right now are not there narrow, probably narrower than I would like, but I, I understand that we have to just take our time.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Kyle?
Um, I, I don't disagree with anything that's been said or the direction we're going. I think that we should utilize the other comments section. And I guess that's where I'm coming from is if, if we are allowed to be subjective in this, you know, I think, I, I don't know if you guys feel similar to the way that I feel about it. But if, if you do, I think that we should put something in there about, you know, specifically with the muse project is, you know, I wasn't prepared for this and I, I feel like I was taken advantage of or manipulated in this situation. Cause that, that's how I feel.
I think part of what you're saying is that all the information wasn't presented, that I think that's.
Presented inaccurately.
I think Kyle, like I, for that particular issue, I think a letter from, so this has, you know, other comments. And that was a zoning application. So I'm not sure, so it kind of.
Was, did we not, I mean, the packet of materials that they, they give to us, is that not presented as evidence? I mean, is that?
It is evidence, but you, at the end of the day, you have to base your decision on whether it meets the criteria and the code for a rezone or not. So you always at a quasi judicial hearing are going to hear information. The mayor may not be relevant to the decision that you're making. Does that make sense? So just.
So can I take a?
Yeah.
About it. I just, I, I'm thinking that Councilmember Harvey's saying that that type of application probably needs to go through a different process than the one that it went through. And those do exist, you know, like they do have ways to develop more, more of a, more of a land use process, more of a public engagement process that substantiates findings. So I think that's the spirit of what you're saying is that like we in theory, kind of like put that through what was being requested, but felt like there was being a lot more requested than what we could base our decision. That's cer- that's certainly part of it. And part of it is that, you know, the, the variances that we, we gave or the, the compromise on the code, the compromises that we made were specifically because of what they're proposing as a project. And I mean, that's what we're commenting on is if this housing project, it's, you know, it, I think that's muddying the waters too, maybe for me is, is we're commenting on whether or not this entire project fits our plan and that hearing was maybe separate and that was zoning. That, that's what I'm understanding.
But does the other comments have to be specific to just the zoning of it? Is other comments open? I'm kind of going to where you're at, which is how things were presented. You know, it's, it's outside the scope of, does it meet with, you know, our current housing plan? But I, I still, is it appropriate to have those comments in the others?
You know, I'm hearing maybe it's not.
But isn't that something that Mary Elizabeth could write a letter?
I mean, I, yeah, I can certainly write. So I was just kind of looking at the cover sheet of, you know, the questionnaire. And, you know, it is pretty vague. Chaffo actually can come in though and do a presentation on the Lytec program. And I think that might be to everybody's point, might be something worth having Chaffa come in and do for a council. Cause that's just a separate aside. So, you know, you, you could put it in here. I, I'm trying to think of the best way to articulate that in the context of what they're asking for, if that makes sense. You know, or if it makes sense, I think it might make more sense for me to write a separate letter that sort of addresses this theme is not the right word maybe, but of, you know, we felt like we weren't given all the information on this project. And we were being asked to make initially a land use decision, you know, and know that there will be other asks, you know, going forward. And we just want Chaffa to understand that, you know, this has been a bit of a strained relationship or, you know, you know, this, um, we have a developer that's coming into our community. And we as city council, you know, need to, we're looking out for our community and we want to, it's our job to kind of, one thing you have to do at quasi, all quasi judicial hearings is you guys are having to make a judgment call about whether the applicant in front of you is going to be following through on everything they've said, you know, and what they're applying for. And so I think, you know, I can craft a letter to talk about those issues, which are a little outside of this, you know, housing plan questionnaire. Does that?
Yeah.
Do you feel okay with that?
Info that was missing didn't have anything to do with zoning. The info that, that we found out later, post facto, that we caught us off guard, didn't have to do with, but had we had that information, you know, I mean, I, I think I see what she's saying, like our reservations with the fruit of muse and what happened after the fact is separate from the zoning decision that we made. And so that, for, for me, that seems like that's better off to be a letter from our attorney.
I think the presentation they gave was you made a decision based on, oh, it's going to be affordable housing and all that. So that's why we need that zoning changed. It wasn't based on how it fit in the surrounding area and all the other facts that we normally would present on. Cause normally we wouldn't give one access point. We wouldn't give staff approval. We wouldn't, you know, give the parking allowance. So normally we wouldn't do that. The only reason we did, we voted on that was because it's affordable housing.
Correct.
So I think that's, I think where the letter would, would outline that, that this is, decision was made based on something not related to what a normal, you know, um, land use code would, we would have normally done.
And you know what? Another, uh, just, just the inconsistencies that we saw from their Chaffa application to the presentation that they gave that night. I mean, that's. application to the presentation that they gave that night. I mean, that's that was.
Absolutely. And that would all be, you know, part of my letter. I think CHFO ultimately, you know, is looking for, and that's why they send these questionnaires out and otherwise, you know, how does how does this project fit with the community? Does it fit with the housing plan? Does it fit with the community needs and wants? Does it, you know, is this going to? It's a long term project, as Lori said earlier, it's, you know, 40 years.
All right. So Mike gave us kind of an outline. Is everybody good with question one and two that he gave?
Yes.
And frankly, yes, we could attach my letter as the other comments.
Okay, for the muse, we're talking about the fruit of muse.
Yes, just to clarify for the muse.
Then the residents.
Any additional information signed in return.
The one we are talking about, just to be clear, is the muse. And so then the residents at Fruta, we wouldn't have any other comments or will we have other comments? That would be my question.
We don't know anything about it.
We don't. Yeah, we don't know anything.
But it would be still the same response, no. And here's why, because this is what we're working on.
A little different comments, right? Because some of the there's there's additional.
Correct.
There wouldn't be a letter from the attorney.
Right. Well.
But that'd be the comments. What I'm saying, one and two would be almost identical.
Yes.
Correct. And then the other one would just have comments.
Well, they're not, will they be identical? Because I think on the residence, you talk about like, it's, yeah, it's close to services and all that stuff. Are we maintaining that?
Yeah, I haven't heard yet that you want us to take any of those pieces out, but we're just clarifying where we're at with the plan, what's approved, what's not, what strategies we're working on, what parts of our plan we have not worked on, which include these types of projects. So, you know, so be specific about not current, it's not currently part of our plan. It's not strong language that Lytec will never be part of our plan, but we have not agreed upon that, you know, those that piece of our plan yet. But there are some pieces as as written currently, unless you want us to remove it, that clarify the differences between those projects and location to some services, not all services, and the amount of units that are at certain AMIs and the differences between that. So I haven't heard you say, take any of that out, but be more specific and direct on no for number one. And then two, where we truly are and what we do not know. So we cannot, which is the explanation of why number one is no, right? So.
But that's why I'm not sure why there would be any other comments of the residents of Fruta. I mean, because I mean, we're we're saying, hey, it's, we don't know what the plan is. So how can we have other comments saying, hey, they're closer to this and this?
Talking about number three, he's talking about number two.
Are you talking about number two? Oh, sorry. And I'm all right.
But then.
But Ken brings up, I think, a great point, which is, you know, clearly there was some frustration with Muse project, I think. But isn't our answer the same for both? So shouldn't the answers be the same for both projects, number one and two?
That's what I that's what I agree with.
I mean, other than again, like.
The one will have a letter from the attorney and.
One won't. But if we don't have a plan, we don't have a plan that fits with both. So does the fact that one's closer to services versus the other?
Good question. We haven't discussed it, right?
I would fear, and I mean, just based off the conversation this evening that like, you know, I think that we're going to need to be a little bit more specific about, you know, plan, no plan. I'm not trying to disagree with you, Councilmember Bremen, but like, you know, I believe or think that that will be taken as, well, they don't have a plan, but they they certainly have a problem. Like, we've looked at their market studies. We know the percentage of those that are cost burdened in that community. And this could help address that. So I think you're gonna have to beef up that you're pursuing ways to rectify that regardless of whether or not they've been approved or we've got financing strategies associated with.
And I agree with that. But if that's the idea, like, you know, here's where we're at, here's what we're working on, here's our goals, all of that, then what's it matter if one's closer to services and one's not?
Because we haven't decided whether we're going to do Lytec or not. And so the fact is, if we were going to do a Lytec, this one might make a little bit more sense because of its location, but we don't, I don't know.
As an English teacher rhetorical rhetorical structure, if you're going to say no on the first one, they ought to be the same. So there's my English teacher answer. But it we're not the ones that are going to make final decision whether CHFO is going to give them this money or not. Does CHFO need to know that this one could be located, but is located better to services? And we still don't think it fits with our current plan.
Perhaps there could be a statement in there that said something to the effect of, you know, because we've talked about it a number of times in workshops and in public meetings that, you know, whatever we decided to do with the strategies that we've been developing, we're going to have to have some significant public process and public support, right? Because there would be financial elements on the line that, you know, that sort of community would help support affordable housing, maybe something to the effect of, you know, it seems it seems a bit unfair to thumbs up, thumbs down, obviously be a little bit more articulate than that as we're about ready to go and engage our community on how we're going to solve this problem. We've paid good money, you know, to develop these strategies in a way to financially support that. And, you know, you're asking us to say yes or no on this right now. And, you know, we're not planning on asking the community that. And I think that I hear undertones of that in everything that people have talked about, which is, you know, we have a big next step, right? Which is, you know, city links and, you know, public engagement and educating on what the issue is in the community and how they want to solve it, you know, and maybe they do come out and say that, you know, these tax credit developments or these types of developments are the way that we should solve it. Maybe they don't, you know, it hasn't been what we've been developing, but but it seems unfair, you know, to kind of adjudicate that in these letters when we don't have the answer for our community.
Yeah, the the close to services piece, I, you know, I would like to know specifics. I mean, where the residences are across the interstate, you know, you're going to be walking, kid's going to go to school. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of issues. So I think we we have a lot of things that we've got to think about before we you know, do any kind of comparisons like that.
All right. So back to the consensus side of it. Are we good with, again, I think we're good with number one saying no, I think. Are we good with saying the same language for number two and then number three having that? Do we really need to explain why one doesn't fit when we don't really know? I mean, that's that. So that's where I'm saying, are we good with one and two being identical and on the Muse project, having other comments with a letter from our attorney?
I think that's the message, Joe.
I'm seeing head nods three on this side. Or five. Karen's got a thumbs up. Is that is that a consensus enough for you?
That's that's great.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for this item, correct, Dan? Are you?
You're going to write this and he's going to sign it. Any more involvement from us?
That's a question that I had. You know, that and Mary Elizabeth, like, these don't require a vote, you know, or a motion and a vote, so.
Sorry. The direction that you guys have provided, you know, staff will redraft, rewrite these responses and I guess what I what I'd just like to hear from you guys is that based upon that direction, then the mayor can come in and and sign the letters. So because.
Mayor has final approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you guys want.
I wouldn't trust him. I wouldn't trust him.
So you can do a formal motion to that if you want, or we can just do.
I think I'd rather do a formal motion just because then it's on the record and we're not, you know, there's no question down the road that it's just head nods. So.
Okay, so what I just because they are going to be slightly different, the news will have an attached letter from me. Maybe do two motions, one for each. That makes sense.
I'd like to read the motion so we can do a. Got on you.
Okay, I will. I will do my best here. I think the motion would be to direct staff to work with the city attorney to revise the responses to the CHFO questionnaire for the residences of Fruta pursuant to the direction given tonight, which was an answer to number one, no. And number two, to explain where the city is with their housing strategies. And you know how this type of project doesn't quite fit into where we are now and it's still a work in progress along those lines. So that would be for the Fruta residences of Fruta.
So moved.
Second.
And oh, I'm sorry, the last piece would be and then for the for the mayor to sign, you know, to finally approve and sign that.
So move with amendment.
Seconded with that amendment.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Did you say ditto with the addition?
That's exactly what I was going to say. The next motion would be with regard to responding to the CHFO questionnaire for the Fruta Muse. Same direction with regard to drafting that response for items one and two. Item three would be an attachment letter from me outlining some of the issues that council has, you know, raised and we've discussed at the workshop with regard to some mischaracterizations and lack of information and sharing of information on the project.
So moved.
Very. And for the mayor to sign. See, you got you so quick.
Already.
I did say ditto. Okay.
Counselor Cry?
Yes.
Counselor Brian?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Buck?
Yes.
Counselor Lenhart?
Yes.
Counselor Harvey? Motion passes six zero.
All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, Dan, you can go home now. All right, now we're going to move into our city managers report.
All right, Mayor, members of council, thanks for the opportunity to give two updates tonight. The first is, I'd like to ask Ciara DiPinto, DiPinto to come up to the podium. I want to introduce Ciara. She's our new communications and engagement specialist. This is a new position that we have not had at the city that was approved in this year's budget. We had a very competitive process, extremely excited about the level and type of candidates that we had. It was, we had some amazing candidates for this position and Ciara was our our clear choice. And she started last week, so this is week two and is just taking a lot of time to learn, meet with many groups internally and will be start meeting with groups externally and working on a number of our current communication efforts and then looking to develop and enhance those communication efforts as well. So wanted to give her a chance just to introduce herself briefly and to counsel formally in this meeting.
Thank you for the introduction, Mike. Yeah, Mr. May and council, so nice to meet you all. Excited to be in Fruta. Yeah, so before I came over to Fruta, I was at the City of Grand Junction Parks Recreation, doing all their marketing over there. So, you know, social media, their activity guide, their website, all that good stuff newsletter. And then I also helped a lot with ribbon cuttings and public engagements and things like that. So their Pro's Master Plan and a lot of their ribbon cuttings, like the Kindred Reserve and the groundbreaking for the stadium that's going on right now over there, all the construction. So yeah, I'm excited to bring my knowledge over here and, you know, help Fruta with all the communication and engagement efforts going on. So yeah, and then before that, I did get my degree at Colorado Mesa University, Business Administration, and I did a lot of event coordinating while I was there as well for their ballroom and all their meeting rooms up there. So yes, excited to be here.
Welcome. Does anybody have any questions?
Just way to start off with an easy meeting.
Yep.
Just kind of taking it nice and slow until you get your feet.
Yeah, just nice and slow. Been reading a lot about all the housing and how we're going to communicate it to the community. So yeah, that's an exciting, exciting topic to dive into, but.
She's working on the draft of the newsletter, so jump right in there, right?
City link version, so.
We're excited to steal more people from Grand Junction.
We're just still the best.
All right. Well, thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Welcome.
Thanks, Ciara. The second update I have tonight is just wanted to give you a heads up on some of the stakeholder meetings happening with the Mulberry Street project and clarify a few things. There's a little bit of confusion out in the public and Kelly sent some clarifying reminders today to all those groups that were invited to meetings and hopefully this will help with with some of that confusion. So one, as you are well aware, we, the city was fortunate to receive a grant that would help pay for two things, engagement with the public on whether or not to make that space permanent. And if it became permanent in that location or perhaps another location, even no matter where the engagement goes, the ability to design a plaza or a type of space in a permanent fashion. Right now we have a temporary space and that temporary space was always temporary from the nature of the materials and the funding that we received for that space, as you all are aware, was COVID relief funds that were required to be temporary pieces of, you know, the seating and the tables and everything like that. So second, that we do have in the budget opportunities to actually initiate potential design of where that one may be. So there's, there's been a little bit of confusion in the community that's a foregone conclusion that it is for sure being closed. And that may very well be an outcome. But we're just starting the engagement process with stakeholder meetings this Thursday, followed by more community meetings later and engagement and surveys that will go out. So this is the very beginning of the process where we have this week, there are three meetings. There's, there's a joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting. There's a all the all the businesses in downtown received email. We had email contacts and then Kelly even walked to the businesses to invite them. So there's one session that way. And then there's also a session with some various grouping of boards and commissions like the Downtown Advisory Board. And now if I start listing on livability commission, I think Arts and Culture Board and Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I believe. So there was a little bit of confusion because some of those invites, someone's like, hey, the meeting on at 3:30. Oh, wait, the meeting's at two and it's because different, it's too many people at once to bring that in. Now, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion about moving towards that being a permanent, a permanent plaza and 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 but, you know, the engagement piece is really what will lead. I know council expressed that when we were talking about going for the grant and all that is that we need to make sure we need to have engagement and have discussion. And so just wanted to clarify that because there there were, there were some miss miss. There was a little bit of misinformation or miscommunication out there where where some were saying, should we even come? It sounds like it's already happening for sure. And just clarifying, we did clarify with them, no, this is the beginning. This is opportunity to engage. It doesn't have to be either or. And keeping it permanent or or opening it up isn't about keeping what's there. This engagement is also about what is missing, what what can we, what amenities do we need in downtown? If there are concerns about the space being closed, what are those concerns and how those could be integrated in whatever this turns out to be. So, you know, it's it's truly the beginning of that engagement and opportunity for people to participate. And so we look forward to getting it going. It's also not, there's, you know, it takes time for decisions to be made and those will be after much engagement and feedback. But we've got a great group. It's actually the group that worked on our land use code that was selected after the the formal bid process and and so they're very familiar with with the city. And and they have a team that does this kind of work. So anyway, you all have received invites. Just wanted to make sure you heard that as well, just in case you hear any of the confusion. But again, reminders and clarification emails went out to just make sure that was clear this this afternoon. And that's all I have today.
All right. Thanks, Mike. With that, we're going to move into council reports and actions. We'll start. Karen, do you want to start?
I don't have anything.
All right. Good start. Lori?
I don't have, I just have one thought and I just want to say thank you guys for, you know, not giving me too hard of a time for missing as many meetings as I have missed. I appreciate it. And I know we've had some heavy discussions and heavy topics. And so thank you for the work you put in. And I'm sorry if I wasn't available, but thank you, guys. I do appreciate it.
Go Cats.
Kyle? The Historic Preservation Board met last Monday morning and one of the things that has been on the list to accomplish for the last. And one of the things that has been on the list to accomplish for the last couple years, but has finally rose to the top is, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the coloring book, the Fruta History Coloring Book that they've been doing for years. And it's usually given to all the elementary school kids at some point. They were kind of down to like the last, I think, sixty or a hundred copies or something like that. And they would like to try and figure out a way to reprint that. And as we all know, paper costs have gone up and whatnot. And so they would like to hold some sort of fundraising campaign for that. And they just kind of wanted to get some sort of approval from council. And I didn't know if that's the type of thing we can get head nods on, or if they should come present. And we can do something like that. I wasn't sure what would, would.
In the past, when that one was, they came to us and just asked for money. So I, I think if they got us a.
I don't know that that's true. I think that they funded a lot of that out of their.
I know Stephen Denise did. We paid for the printing, I think, if we look back in the notes.
I think, I think.
I think paid, Rotary donated too. And I did talk to Steve and Denise and said that I'm sure they would be more than willing to do that again. So if you could remind them, we can connect for sure.
Well, they had, I think they had, I think they had gotten some estimates maybe a year or two ago. And so they'll have to go back out and do that again. But, and then Arts and Culture Board, oh, sorry.
I was just, to answer your question real quick, there, there's a few options, right? So as advisory boards, boards and commissions can fundraise, but only with the approval of council. So whether they come and present and then you approve it then, or Kyle, as the liaison is asking now, and you want to say, yes, you can go ahead and raise funds for the coloring book and make sure that's on the record. Then that's, that's one for fundraising. There is funding in every annual budget for boards and commissions. And sometimes boards and commissions may come, like, I think the Downtown Advisory Board came a couple of years ago, asked for, you know, $500 for a particular project. And council can decide to allocate some of those funds. And then if they're going to other entities asking for grants, that fits in that fundraising category. So you could even act tonight and saying, yes, we, we have, we give them approval to fundraise, but they also could come and request. So there's a couple, it depends.
What are you asking us, Kyle? Do you want to?
Would you be okay with them fundraising?
Yeah.
For the coloring book.
Because we've seen another board go crazy.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have a motion for that?
Council Buck?
Yes.
Council Lenhart?
Yep.
Mr. Harvey? Council Cry?
Yes.
Council Bremen?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Arts and Culture Board met on Wednesday. They were hoping to, they'd asked me to ask you guys if they could come and have a workshop with the council about the music park idea that they presented before the holiday season, one of those meetings. And it sounds like we have a full agenda this month. So they were really concerned that I be there. I don't know how important that is. But I, they would like to set that meeting up as soon as possible and.
Yeah. Well, Kyle talked to me about it and I think we just need to find out what's on our agenda for next month. Because I don't know how much we've got.
You know, once, once April hits, we go into all the training, quasi judicial, all those things. So all the training pieces with new council, but that doesn't mean that has to be, that those are going to be over a series of meetings, right? And so not, I mean, you could add that on. I think, I think there's two questions with that one, you know, they presented to council once, council, well, about three things. Council gave them, I think, pretty clear direction. Yeah, start on the other two. And then we'll, we'll talk more about the, the park. And then I think there's also, you know, there's, there's both the council discussion, probably looking for some staff direction to, and, and the Frost Plan and all of that. And I think the Arts and Culture Board, I'm talking to the staff liaison in their last few meetings. It's just been, we need to know if it's something we should be raising funds for, what the council thinks. But I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's an easy answer in just one meeting. We've got to look at, you know, one, it's not in the Frost Plan, right? So that doesn't mean it's not something we do, but is that the right location? Is that, I'm just asking questions that need to be evaluated, right? Is it the right location? I think it's a great idea. And just because it wasn't in Frost doesn't mean it can't be considered. But, you know, was, is it the right location? Are there other options, locations? Are there other projects in the Frost that would have room to do something like that when we get to them? So there's a lot of things to be evaluated.
Mike, I'll throw in one more thing. And what about, how does it relate to tourism? Because we do have a tourism budget.
Right.
You know, I think that could be an amenity, because we keep talking about trails are amenities to bring people here. So is it something else that would attract people?
So we need further, we definitely need further discussion with the board and with council. And I think, you know, there, it sounds like they're moving, already moving on those other, the other two things like the, and you've reported about those, but this one, you know, it's hard for them to move forward until they kind of have some clear direction. So I think we need to.
Pretty aware of that and they've kind of known, like, we need to get this on the books if we want, if this is something we actually want to pursue.
And fundraise for and all those things, right?
Sure. What you'd like me to report to them?
I think we, I think we should need to schedule a date to get them on the workshop.
And I, you know what?
And they need to come with all that information.
Yeah. I, I did tell Kyle that he can attend any meeting as a public participant, or not participant, but.
But workshops, usually you can't. I mean, I won't be able to comment unless you guys.
Unless we ask you to.
And Kyle, do you know if they're, are they looking to know, is one piece of it, wanting to know if they should, if they could start fundraising for that with an event they're looking to do. And they've typically done an event in May and I'm just wondering timing wise, right? You know, is there?
I think that there's a lot of the, I think those, there's a lot of questions.
Gotcha.
I don't think it's just one question. I think it's, we need to have a conversation and see really what the council's appetite for this is. You know, does the city feel like there's land somewhere, whether it's that, the parcel that they mentioned prior? I think they mentioned that at the meeting. So all those questions.
What I'd, I, I think the land they mentioned in the meeting is goofy. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I would definitely want to know what other locations are possible. And then you said something else, location, whatever he said, that's, that's what I'd need to be able to.
You know, if there's.
Great idea, but that location just doesn't make any sense to me.
With everything, not just as its own separate.
Well, before we get into deep conversation on this, why don't we set a date to have them come in? And then we can get all of our questions answered.
Yeah, I was just saying to him, that's the kind of information for they, that they should.
That's, we should pick a date after this council is, after this side of the council has gone.
So I think, you know, prior to a date, you could also, I mean, you have these advisory groups, right? And this is, this happens a lot with a couple of boards and commissions where they can collaborate and do something really well. I think before they just show up and ask you, and then you're going to have a bunch of questions going back. And even if that date, the earliest is the April workshop or later. I think it'd be good for, for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to work with, like for them to have a joint meeting and with staff and to come with some, come with a little bit more meet and, and requests from council to consider, right?
That's, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to just set a date and they're asking the same questions that we're already asking.
What we could be doing prior to that date. Yeah.
All right. So I should advise them to schedule meetings with those other boards first.
Get some information so then they.
You know, it's the same staff liaison, so I can also give direction to the staff liaisons that, hey, let's get these groups together. And I've asked staff already this week, just because of that request, like, we need to look into, you know, what are the pros and cons of various locations as well, so we can provide that information. So I think if those two groups can have a joint meeting, staff working with both of those groups, it'd probably be a more productive meeting with council for that first meeting, whether that's, and that can be wherever you guys want to schedule.
That could be April or May or what, whatever that works in that timeline. So, all right, we'll get that. And Kyle, on the record, Kyle can attend it. So just so we are.
Mike, would you mind relating to Mark, just kind of that?
Yeah.
I, I mean, I will as well, but maybe. Encouraging some of the conversations that you think need to happen there. Because I think that's one of the, one of the things that gets difficult is, you know, the Arts and Culture Board is full of people that are ready just to, you know, I'll do this, I'll do that, you know.
Yeah, they're great.
I mean, but I think that they may not know exactly what they need to address leading up to that meeting, so.
Yeah. And I, I had a meeting with Mark yesterday and then with this tonight, you know, I can help go over that with him too. And then we'll get that going, so.
That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you. Matthew?
Nothing to report. GJ meets tomorrow morning.
All right. Heather?
Yeah, we had some good news out of the Parks and Rec meeting. They, the bids for the filter for the pool have come in and they've all come in under budget. And they don't need to cut out the wall to get the filter in. The new filter is the diameters of the like hallway and door that they have to go in, so that's all good. The sweetheart run had about 500 people in it, which was great. And then they were looking at all of the fees for the various park rentals, whether you're going to rent the pagoda or you're just going to, or you're a for-profit entity like the Trek Dirt Series that rents out Saltwash Park. Or you're a birthday party. They're looking at all those fee structures and trying to bring some of them up to date and trying to make sure that for-profit is paying a different amount than like your happy birthday party for your six-year-old kind of thing. So looking at all of those structures.
AGNC meets tomorrow at the Stalker Stadium at, in the hospitality suite. I was planning to attend that, but my day today made it so I can't tomorrow. So I did RSVP, so if somebody wants to go in my place, you can. Bill Carlson is going to be my alternate. He's a city of Palisade trustee. So that meeting is forthcoming. I can update you if anything comes out of that. The Downtown Board canceled their meeting this last month, so we could all attend the candidate forum last week. That's it.
All right. Thank you. My meetings are upcoming here, so I don't have anything else to report at this time. So with that, it's nine twenty-one. We are going to adjourn.